Good morning. It's February 25, 2025. It's a little past nine o'clock and you're at the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. First up, pledge allegiance to the flag. Please remain standing for the invocation by Jeff Fishney with Love Stanislaus County.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all due and justice for all.
Good morning. Before I offer this short invocation, I just want to say thank you for just your encouragement and support of Love Stanislaus County for many, many years now. Our big volunteer day is coming up, April 26th. We have 15 cities in our county. We're hoping for over maybe 10,000 volunteers coming out on that day, loving our county and loving the cities that we're in, and we're just really excited about that. The end goal of this volunteer day is not the volunteer day. It's for ongoing pride, ongoing involvement in volunteerism in our community. And to that end, we developed an app called Volunteer Central, and I would encourage everyone to download this app, find ways to volunteer, you know, all throughout the year. Over 1,000 downloads have already happened here. So find your place to volunteer. Let me pray. God, I thank you for my leaders I stand before. God, I thank you for their public service to our community. And I pray blessings on each of them and their families and their employment and their service to our community. And God, I pray that you would give each of them wisdom beyond themselves as they interact with their constituents, as they make decisions, you know, for our county. And God, I pray this morning, as for the conversations that happen and for the decisions that are made, God, would you give each of them the wisdom that they need? And God, we thank you for our county. Thank you for the place that we live, that you love and that we love too. In your name I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. First up, we have seven employee recognitions for 25, 30, and 35 years respectively. First up is Sheriff Dursen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It is a pleasure to be here to honor Lieutenant Amber Wright for her 25 years of service to Stanislaus County and the sheriff's office. It is a pleasure to do that. Amber is a lieutenant. She is in charge of both our minimum housing units, which are two facilities on the kind of east edge of our campus, as well as our support services division. She has obviously served in a variety of roles as a deputy, as a sergeant, and now as a lieutenant. But in her current assignment, and this is, I think, probably the biggest one so far of her career definitively, she functionally oversees all of those elements that make our jails work. And if you think of the jail, right, with 1,415 or so inmates in our custody this morning, it's kind of a small town, right, with all of the associated needs of a small town, and Amber is the one that makes sure all of those needs work and work for our facility, as well as managing her own facility, which brings its own challenges, as she no doubt can attest to. But we appreciate her leadership there and making that system run. And then Amber also oversees a lot of other things within our organization, specifically almost all of our volunteer efforts. When we talk about stars and chaplains and those that kind of serve within the organization to make sure our deputies are mentally healthy and well. She also oversees our mascot program, which was started a couple of years ago, and that has been resounding success as we go out and engage specifically with kids across the community in various forums. So I would just like to thank Amber for her 25 years of dedicated and engaged service and all that she does for our organization. Amber, thank you. Congratulations.
Amber, thank you for your time and dedication and your dedication to the people of Stanislaus County. On behalf of the entire board, we want to say thank you.
I'd just like to say time flies, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to have been in this profession and to have the opportunity to lead in the department, and it's been an honor. Thank you.
Next up is Mary Ann Lilly.
I'm Mary Ann Lilly, and I'm here this morning happy to present Frances Trejo, and we're here to celebrate 25 years of service to Stanislaus County. Frances has been a dedicated and valuable member of the Health Services Agency for all of the 25 years, working in the centralized scheduling unit. We refer to that as CSU, as an administrative clerk to operator. Over 25, over 25 years ago, I understand while working at a local cannery for Del Monte Foods, Frances sought out additional education in the area of accounting, and that is what led you to apply for the county. So Frances accepted a job with HSA's central business office in February of 2000. After a short time in our business office, Frances transferred to the CSU and has been providing excellent customer service to the residents of Stanislaus County ever since. Frances has proudly served her community by working to assist our clients with dedication and respect, including offering bilingual translation. She demonstrates that each person matters, treating all inquiries with respect, dignity, confidentiality, and kindness. Frances demonstrates all the county values in her work. She's known by her coworkers as friendly, funny, caring, and honest. You can always count on her to be at work and ready to go with a smile on her face, even after 25 years. Frances has seen a lot of changes over the years at HSA, changes in management, staffing, clinical services, facilities, and programs. She showed strong dedication by learning and adapting to all the changes while maintaining the highest level of professionalism. In the past six months alone, Frances has answered or assisted with over 10,000 incoming inquiries into HSA. She provides one-on-one assistance to each caller, working every day to earn people's trust with every call she takes. She's not just answering the phone, she's listening with compassion, addressing questions, and advocating for each caller. When asked by her supervisor what she likes best about her job, I understand that Frances stated, "I enjoy connecting with our clients, helping them, and meeting their needs. I'm proud to offer bilingual assistance, which is a strong need in our agency. I'm happy to say that I have made good friends within the department and look forward to seeing them each day." In her personal life, Frances has had some battles with medical issues and losses, but through it all, she continued to move forward, giving 100%. Frances raised her two children and is a grandmother of four grandchildren, ages eight to 19 years old. Her plans in retirement include traveling, but she does not like planes, so that will mean road trips with your father and you have five siblings. We're proud to stand with you today, Frances, to thank you for your hard work and dedication over 25 years. Thank you.
Frances, thank you for your time, dedication, your compassion, and your empathy. And I don't like planes either.
I'd like to say thank you, and it was a pleasure working or working at CSU, and I enjoy helping the clients and my coworkers. Thank you.
We have a lot of years of service at HSA to celebrate today. So now with me is Alicia Thomas. Alicia has worked with Stanislaus County for a little over 25 years, and all of it in the Health Services Agency clinic system. She started with HSA in 1999 as a Kelly temp, working in medical records. It was from this exposure that Alicia was encouraged to apply for county employment. And on January 13th of 2000, she joined us as an administrative clerk one in medical records in our specialty clinics. That was in the old hospital building down the basement, right? Yeah. Alicia was promoted to an administrative clerk two in May of 2002. In 2008, Alicia transferred into primary care medical records, first at the Family Practice Center on Sinek, and then on to the then-new Paradise Medical Office. Alicia applied her knowledge and skill to support the clinical services at the Paradise Medical Office until the changes that HSA made last summer, when she transitioned back to the Family and Pediatric Health Center. Alicia shares that through the last 25 years, through all the facility transitions, she's had many opportunities, opportunities for new experiences, opportunities to learn, opportunities to work with many amazing staff, and opportunities to build great, long-lasting relationships. Alicia's manager has shared that Alicia is a strong advocate for her peers and our patients. She's willing to bring concerns forward, especially when they're impacting our department and when others may be reluctant to do so. She works to identify the needs of patients and the resources required to meet those needs. Alicia demonstrates that each person matters and the importance of being a good partner as she is advocating for peers and our patients. I understand that Alicia may not want to speak today, but she has shared some of her thoughts, so I'll share those with you. Alicia would like to personally acknowledge her manager back from 1999, Karen Myers, in specialty medical records, for encouraging her to apply for the county when she was a temporary employee. She'd also like to acknowledge Ruth Perez, Joan Donlin, and Patricia Treviso, who were her managers and supervisor at the Family Practice Center and Paradise Medical Office for supporting her and providing encouragement throughout the years. Alicia wants the Board of Supervisors and the community to know that she's humbled at this amazing experience, to have her 25 years of service be recognized here today, and to have her dedication to her work be acknowledged in this special celebration. Alicia, thank you for your dedicated service to Stanislaus County.
Alicia, on behalf of the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors, we want to just say thank you for your service to the people of Stanislaus County. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Carl Quinn. I'm with Department of Environmental Resources. I'm the manager for the Environmental Health Division. It's my pleasure to share with you the story of this remarkable individual, Mary Kay Cook, whose dedication and expertise have left a long-lasting impact on our division. Mary Kay graduated from the University of the Pacific in 1997 and began her career with the county in Environmental Health Division in March 2000. Prior to joining our county, she worked in a laboratory, gaining valuable experience that laid the foundation for her future career. In 2002, Mary Kay passed the Registered Environmental Health Specialist exam on her first try, a significant milestone that led to her promotion to Environmental Health Specialist III in 2004. With 25 years of experience, Mary Kay has become a leader in several key programs, particularly in consumer protection, including retail food, body art, and cottage food programs. While the retail food programs have been a longstanding part of our work, the body art and cottage food programs are relatively new, and Mary Kay played a pivotal role in their development. Her hard work and contribution were recognized in 2019, when she was promoted to Senior RHS, where she now oversees the vital programs. Outside of work, Mary Kay leads a rich and fulfilling life. She married her longtime boyfriend, Michael, in 2000, and Michael is with us right now, joining us in this special occasion. Together, they are avid gamers, especially enjoying the game World of Warcraft. Mary Kay dedicates her spare time to volunteering at Wildlife Rehab Center and enjoy comics, crafts, and cooking. Mary Kay's journey, both professionally and personally, reflects her unwavering commitment, passion, and dedication. She has made a profound impact on the health and safety of our community, and we are incredibly grateful for her, all she has done. Thank you, Mary Kay, and congratulations on 25 years of service.
Mary Kay, on behalf of the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors, I wanted to say thank you for your service and dedication to the people of Stanislaus County, and thank you for your boyfriend, or husband, Michael, right? Thank you for being here to support. Would you like to say a few words?
I would just like to say thank you to Carl for being here today, and for, of course, Michael for his support, and to be a support for all of you in my ability to do my job for environmental health through the Department of Environmental Resources over these past 25 years, and looking to do more, but maybe not 25. So thank you, everyone.
Next up, for 30 years of service, Mary Ann Lilly's back up.
Renee Crawford. Renee has spent the last 30 years working in Family Health Services section of the Public Health Services at HSA, beginning as a community health worker. The first nine years, she worked in Adolescent Family Life Program in Cal Learn, working with pregnant and parenting teens and their children. In the early 2000s, I understand that you were working on and you earned your master's degree in social work, and so then Renee was promoted into the Social Work Series, promoting over the years, and since 2018, serving as a social worker five. Renee worked in the Healthy Birth Outcomes Program in partnership with First Five Commission, where she worked serving high-risk pregnant and parenting individuals and their families as a social worker in coordination with community health workers and public health nurses. As that program was phased out through HSA, Renee shifted her skills and talent to the High-Risk Maternal-Child Health Program, serving families through home visits. She also started working in the Comprehensive Perinatal Services Program, ensuring high-quality prenatal care for women in our community. In 2023, she returned back to home visiting in the Healthy Families Stanislaus Program, where she again is working with pregnant and parenting individuals and their families. In the midst of all of Renee's busy work, she's made time for the past 24 years to serve as a union steward for SEIU, most recently moving into a leadership role in 2019. I've worked a bit with Renee in this capacity and have always appreciated her professionalism and commitment. Renee stays very busy when she's not at work, too. She wrote a book called A Practical Guide to Social Work. She serves as the community social worker of sorts, fielding questions from community members who know her in her role as an advocate. She was honored last year in Patterson as Woman of the Year and currently is being honored during this Black History Month for her role in the community as a social worker. She actively works as a member of the NAACP, where she is currently the community coordinator. And last year, she was recognized by the Equal Rights Commission, awarded the Del Butler Award in 2024. In case all of that wasn't enough, Renee also works to continue her education, something that benefits her and her work in our community here at the county. She has associate's degrees in business administration, real estate, physical education, and behavioral sciences. She's working on her last class for AA in communication and has one class left to complete in AS in child development. Our community has surely benefited from your dedication to lifelong learning. So Renee, you've impacted so many families over the years, really bringing results. So thank you for your 30 years of service.
I really do appreciate everyone being here for my 30th, and I just can't believe that my good friend here, Olga Diaz, who we started as a community health worker here with HSA, and my crew at HFA and HSF, H FHS, that's it. Thank you all.
On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I want to say thank you for your service to the people of Stanislaus County, the babies, the teens, the families, not only that, your representation of your colleagues, right, and the community with the activism that you participate in. We want to say thank you.
Okay, another 30 years. Claudia has been with HSA for all of the 30 years of service to our community, beginning in 1994, working part-time as a community health worker one. Claudia quickly moved into full-time CHW role. She was initially hired as a Spanish-language interpreter and worked in home visiting alongside public health nurses. By 1999, though, Claudia was promoted to a community health worker three and was carrying a caseload of her own, serving our community. In 2008, Claudia started working in the Teen Pregnancy Prevention Program in our Health Promotions area. In this role, she went into area junior high and high schools and taught in the health education classes. I understand that this was amazing, that you were amazing at this work, that Claudia connected really well with the students and was passionate about providing them accurate information, encouraging them to avoid risky behavior and instead make healthy choices. In 2011, she moved over to the clinic division for a short period of time. She worked at the Paradise Medical Office as a comprehensive perinatal health worker, where she provided education to pregnant women. In 2012, she returned, though, to Health Promotions, where she worked in tobacco use prevention, healthy eating, and oral health programs. In 2022, Claudia returned to Family Health Services and the home visiting programs. She now works in Healthy Families Stanislaus Program, where she serves pregnant and parenting individuals and their families. One thread through all of this time, I understand Claudia has had an active role in Child Passenger Safety Program, that we know it as Keep Baby Safe. Claudia quickly became a leader in the area of child passenger safety. She's been a car seat instructor for a number of years now, and her advocacy and tireless work are part of the reason why our county has a strong child car seat program, really delivering results, right? We want to keep those little ones safe. At every turn, Claudia has been working to promote and protect health and wellness for our community members, demonstrating that each person matters. We are incredibly grateful for her passion and dedication to the residents of Stanislaus County. Her job has never been just a job. She is tireless, is a tireless and outspoken advocate for community health. Our community is better because of you, Claudia. So thank you so much for your 30 years.
Oh, I just want to thank, I just want to thank you for this opportunity to be here, my amazing team over here. Heather DeVall, she taught me a lot. I don't know where she's at. There she is. Erica, I love going to training with you. Julie, mi amor. I just want to thank you. I really appreciate it. Ah, there you are! Ah! I knew we were from, ah, don't tell me. Airport. Ah, I remember. Thank you.
Claudia, Claudia, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I want to say thank you for all your work in the community and keeping our babies safe. Your work does make a difference.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Doris Foster, Director of Workforce Development. We are here today to recognize Andy Fiskam for his 35 years of service. Andy started in 1990 as an interviewer at $7.41 an hour with Workforce Development. Within a year, he promoted to an Employment and Training Specialist, where he was responsible for our on-the-job training grants, and he worked with a lot of businesses in our community in order to make sure that people got employed through that program. In 97, he worked as Employment and Training Analyst in our Contracts and Planning Unit, where he still is. His responsibilities included contract management, program planning, writing requests for proposals, negotiating contract terms and conditions, project oversight, and labor market information. We're very proud. In 2003, Andy completed the Occupational Outlook Report, where he received top honors from the state in recognition from his report graphics. In 2007, Andy took a promotional opportunity with Animal Services. For a period of that time, I was the interim director and had the opportunity to continue working with Andy and to see him shine when working with rescue organizations and also the foster program that we had for adopting out animals. In 2010, Andy transferred back to Workforce Development and continued to work in his capacity as Staff Service Analyst. In 2019, Andy was promoted to Staff Service Coordinator, which is his current role with the department. He currently supervises five Staff Service Analysts, who are all here today. He has a great team and helps them to develop their skills. Most recently, Andy was requested to work in an out-of-class capacity as a regional organizer. In this role, he works with seven counties in our region, putting together our regional plan. In his time with the county, Andy has always been enthusiastic, devoted team player, who is a great presenter, professional while being extremely personable and humorous, and always ready to lend a hand when needed. Andy demonstrates high energy in new and challenging situations or learning new tasks, and has good humor even in the most difficult situations. Andy has managed more contracts than anyone else in the division and is well-prepared on when asked to report on contract compliance and performance. He can be relied on to see the most challenging tasks through to successful completion. He's dedicated to delivering high-quality results while maintaining a high work output. It's truly commendable. He's very adaptable to change and has shown remarkable ability to pivot and adapt in changing circumstances, making him invaluable to our Contracts and Planning Unit and to the department. He is alert and proactive in taking on critical tasks and projects needed for the department. He consistently goes above and beyond when expected with quality results. Andy's performance reflects an exceptional level of dedication, adaptability, and initiative. During COVID-19, Andy and his team were instrumental in supporting micro grant initiatives that supported local business impacted by COVID-19, as well as providing guidance to our contract agencies. He is a successful grant writer, where the department has been awarded millions to serve our community due to his strong grant-writing skills. He has also assisted in regional partners and counties in completion of their grant applications for applications for funds. He is known throughout the state for his grant-writing abilities. Andy has announced his retirement from county service, which will be effective in three weeks. In his years, he's made a great impact on those that work with him. He genuinely cares for those he works with and the business and clients we serve. We are very lucky that Andy's daughter, Allison, started with us a year ago, and so he leaves behind a family member to carry on his torch. Outside of Workforce Development, Andy and his wife, Betty, have been involved in county's Child Foster Care Program, as well as the Animal Foster Care Program. When asking Andy what he plans to do after retirement, he shares his love for golf. Congratulations, Andy.
You know, I want to say thank you to my wife, Betty, who's here, and to my team as well. You know, 35 years is a long time, and I think if you ask anybody who's been up here, the reason they stayed that long is this commitment to the ideals of the organization that they work with and the mission. You can't stay this long if you don't agree with the mission of your organization. So for all of you who've been here this morning, thank you for your service. For my team, thank you for putting in a big effort. And for Doris and our management and leadership team, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Andrew, on behalf of the Stanislav County Board of Supervisors, I would just say thank you for your service to the people here in Stanislav County. And regionally, your work touched people in the seven-county region, and we just want to say thank you for that. Millions of dollars, it's outstanding. Think we can, think we can talk you into staying a little longer?
I try. I bet.
I don't know. Well, we got to give it a shot.
Public Comment is a time for those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda. Please state your name for the record, direct all comments towards the dais, and so it is fair for every speaker, keep comments to the five-time limit. And CEO Hayes has some announcements.
Yeah, just, sorry about that. For the start of Public Comment, do just want to recognize that we did receive written public comment for several individuals this morning, so I just want to acknowledge those. First would be Mayor Michael Clazell from the city of Patterson. Also received public comment from Christopher Goak, Ludi Ramirez, Kristi Johns, Roberto Ramirez, and that concludes our written public comments that I have.
Thank you. Okay, first up is Elias.
My name is Elias Funes, former Patterson Planning Commissioner, Parks and Recreation Commissioner, and member of the General Plan Advisory Committee for their most recent 2012 General Plan and former editor of the Patterson Irrigator newspaper. For the past few years, I have been volunteering with the Save Del Porto Canyon Group, and we have pulled tons and tons of trash out of the Del Porto Creek watershed. Today, I'm here to talk about Del Porto Canyon and the asset that it is to the Patterson community, as it has been for generations. During the last Board of Supervisors meeting, the discussion item was held on the road relocation, in which this board went along with the Del Porto Water District's plans. However, those consultants have not been forthcoming with all the information regarding those opposed to those plans, and there are thousands of us that have signed a petition against any sort of disruption of Del Porto Canyon rocks, the Del Porto Creek corridor, and the historic Del Porto Canyon Road. If you want to give those copies to the clerk for the record. During the meeting, the discussion made it sound like this would be an asset to Patterson in terms of flood protection. However, Patterson has already taken steps towards flood protection, and this proposed reservoir would actually force residents to purchase additional flood insurance due to the potential catastrophic failure of that dam. Another bit of info that the Del Porto Water District likes to ignore is that the city of Patterson already has plans for that area in a world-class regional park that would honor the culture and natural heritage of our community. And this was approved as part of the 2012 General Plan. Here, hold this up. Hold it up high. Long before the Del Porto Water District came with their plans for the reservoir, there is a Native American pathway carved into the historic Gateway Rocks that would be protected with the creation of this park within the historic Gateway, and an outdoor amphitheater is planned. All of this would be taken from us by allowing the Del Porto Water District to move forward. Giving us a scenic overlook would not replace this asset that would be taken from us. Banking water for wildlife for the San Joaquin National Wildlife Refuge 50 miles away does nothing to protect the special and endangered species that will be displaced from the first five miles of Del Porto Canyon. Since the beginning, we have been asking for mitigated land from the Del Porto Canyon Reservoir Project to be done on-site and not at the San Joaquin National Wildlife Refuge. Anthea Hansen of the Del Porto Water District claims that her organization has been communicative with Del Porto Canyon road users, but why would they pull the residents of Diablo Grande and not the residents of Patterson, who share the burden of the traffic of Del Porto Canyon? In fact, Hansen has been deceptive in her involvement that her organization's had with the Patterson community. During COVID, Hansen sent a letter to the editor of the Patterson Irrigator, assuring the community that there would be an in-person meeting for the community to attend before any approvals would be made. Unfortunately, Hansen went back on her word, and the Water District approved their plans without holding that in-person town hall. We understand that the state needs water, but at only 80,000 acre-feet of potential storage, it does not outweigh the negative effects that the reservoir would have on our community. During the discussion of the last meeting, Supervisors mentioned the desire to have each West Side Canyon dammed. Well, let me remind the Supervisors of the previously-approved sister reservoir of the San Luis Reservoir, the Los Banos Grandes Reservoir, approved in the 1990s, and it would hold nearly 2 million acre-feet of water. So this previously-approved reservoir was conveniently overlooked as an alternative, though it sits directly within the Del Porto Water District and South San Joaquin River Exchange Contractors' purview. Why would these project proponents overlook the already-approved Los Banos Grandes Reservoir? Because although it would provide more bang for their buck, it would be highly contested by environmental and community organizations. While we all on the West Side are tired of having unpopular projects placed in our backyards, like the toxic Wesley tire pile that resulted in a nasty fire, the Covanta trash-burning plant, and the Finkload landfill. So here you have the Toallamy River Regional Park, Dry Creek area. In Patterson, we finally had the opportunity to have our own natural cultural heritage park, our own slice of nature that the community could enjoy, but you will be taking that away from us by going along with the Del Porto Water District's plans, and we will be, get nothing but higher insurance costs, lower quality of life, and more hassle. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Next up is Roberta.
Hello, everyone. My name is Roberta. I'm going to put my timer on because it's not up there. All right. I'm actually here for two things today. One, I'd like to start off with issue with the Stanislav County Sheriff. I recently had a friend who was being evicted from her home. She has severe mental health issues. She has sought help at BHRS. They couldn't, they did not provide trauma-informed care with her, which was appalling to me. While this person understands their rights, their rights continue to be violated. And as she was being evicted, she had sheriffs come to her house, which, understandable, that's how the eviction process unfortunately works. But as she, as they came up to her, she started crying, and they told her to stop. They started to get very, use violent words with her. They're very unkind. She expressed that she had mental health issues, and they did not care. She was trying to get ahold of me as I was on my way. When I got there, the two sheriffs, who I unfortunately did not catch their name, but will be filing a complaint against them, they said, oh, maybe we can talk to you and you can actually, we can actually talk to you, which, first off, was very rude towards my friend. And then I said, well, my friend has severe mental health issues. You need to understand that. And they said, well, we just need to talk to you. And I said, yes, but I need you to acknowledge and understand that my friend has severe mental health issues and trauma. So as you're going to talk to me, you need to understand that. They would not have it. They said, oh, you're being difficult, just like her. And as I told them, I said, look, we need to look at this from a trauma-informed perspective. And I said, and you, officer, are escalating this situation. I was even keeled. He said, you know what? This isn't going to work, and storms away. Why can't our sheriffs, why can't CSA, because they've also been in issue with this, why can't BHRS have trauma-informed care? That is the basic level of human compassion and empathy. And our county does a really bad job of it, and it's appalling. It's disgusting. It's embarrassing to live in Stanislav County, to be frank, because this is a constant issue I'm hearing from people. I've had to talk with people from San Joaquin County, and they do a much better job with trauma-informed care. And so I just really want you guys to push trauma-informed training, and not just the yearly training, but to practice it. To practice trauma-informed care means that when someone's having a mental health breakdown, you listen and you de-escalate, that you care about them. We have neighbors here in our community with severe mental health issues, and if we cannot come alongside them, what kind of community is this? So please, trauma-informed care across the board, especially when people have guns. And that was the scariest thing for her, is they had their hands on their guns. For all she knew, she was going to be shot that day. Secondly, I'm also here for the Del Porto Canyon. My father worked in water for 31 years and was very active in understanding all sides of an issue. He was an environmental health science major. He loved to work with public health. He loved to work with the environmental groups. He loved to hear out farmers and everyone involved. One of the big things that we've noticed in the Central Valley is we used to be the largest path for the migration of birds, but we've dammed up our water and destroyed the Central Valley. If we go forward with this dam, we are once again destroying our ecosystem. We have a very fragile ecosystem as global warming continues to take over. Our water tables suffice here in the, in our region. Fortunately, down in Merced, we're starting to see water tables lower, but due to the delta, in Stanislav County, our water tables are good. And instead of damming up water, which quite frankly rapes the land, we need to be looking at how we can have water-saving measures. We need to take more of a Las Vegas/Phoenix approach here. Why do we have grass? Grass, their roots are this thick. That's it. So that requires a lot of water. That doesn't also allow for, we just end up using a lot more water. We need to be focusing on saving water instead of just building another dam, which quite frankly isn't a lot of, it does, will not carry a lot of tonnage of water. And so I just ask that you look at saving water rather than putting up another dam. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Brandon Kirkbride.
My name is Brandon Kirkbride. I'm representing the Stanislav sworn Deputy Sheriff's Association, back again. As I can only address questions to the chairman, sorry to put you on the spot, Mr. Condit, but I have some questions for you. I have the answers if you do not know them. The first question is, how long have we been out of contract?
Brandon, this is not a back-and-forth. This is a time for you to state what you need to state.
Okay. So eight weeks. What's our current staffing level? This time last year, February last year, we were at 196. We're currently at 185. We're lucky enough to have five trainees that just started two weeks ago. That brings us to 190, but we have seven people leaving. One's in retirement, the other six are deputies leaving to other agencies. Those agencies are City of Modesto, City of Turlock, City of Livermore, San Joaquin County, UC Merced, and a deputy leaving to go to Texas to be a cop in Texas. So my question to you all, what are you going to do about it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ren. Next up, Elaine Gorman.
My name is Elaine Gorman. I live in District One, unincorporated Stanislav County. And I know this item isn't on the agenda that I'm going to speak about, but it's been kind of an ongoing issue for the past couple of years. I'd like to speak about the proposed Del Porto Canyon Dam and Del Porto Canyon rerouting, road rerouting. I'm opposed to the building of the dam, which has potential problems such as earthquake and downstream flood damage, habitat destruction, and dubious water-saving capabilities. I am also concerned about and am opposed to the possible rerouting of Del Porto Canyon Road, as many Stanislav residents and visitors use the road for access into the canyon. Water for agriculture and domestic use is important for all Californians, but building a dam in Del Porto Canyon will not alleviate water issues for our county. You must consider alternative sites and viable conservation efforts. Del Porto Canyon is an important natural resource with cultural and environmental values. Stanislav County has a mandate to protect our natural heritage. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next up is Renee Fry.
My name is Renee Fry, and I'm IHSS Provider for Interlock. I've been a provider for almost a year. I have a deep passion for caring for people. That's what brings me here to this position. We work a lot harder than a lot of state and government workers. We clean up human bio-waste, vomit, yet we're underpaid. We work just as hard as a lot of people getting prevailing wage, and we're still underpaid. We work less than, we work less than union-paid janitors and do some of the same work. And again, we're still underpaid. We get paid less than Lyft and herb driver drivers to haul Grandma to and from her appointments with our own money for gas, warranty, tires, insurance, and we're still way underpaid. I just want, you just want to offer us pennies. We are asking for a little more help. You, as the Board of Supervisors, could help us with this. We are asking for your compassion and supporting a fair wage. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Next up is Alisa Smith.
Hello. Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Alisa Smith and I am a Provider here in Stanislaw County with IHSS Provider. Excuse my little nerves. But it's here where me and my daughter reside. I was a recipient of IHSS services for nine years until recently becoming a Provider myself as of 5, 2023 of last year. Arisa, my daughter, had sustained a head, a head injury when she was only eight years old from a bully while attending school here in Stanislaw County. From that point, she was put on IEP and homeschooled. My daughter is currently 20 years old and is still disabled due to this incident at school and still needs assistance every day in life. Due to severity of my daughter's head injury, I had to make some serious life changes. At the beginning of the incident, I was working at Allstate. I was beginning my career there as an insurance agent. Due to receiving calls throughout the day and my daughter now receiving seizures throughout the day, I had to, I had to quit my job and become an assistant for my daughter and put my career on hold to be able to ensure my daughter gets the care that she needs throughout the day. The reason why I'm bringing this up is because IHSS Services has been a very huge help for me and my daughter. Without their services, I don't know how we could have coped on being out of work and also being a, out of work and also being my daughter needing services and my IHSS Providers. So my question to you is, would you step off your position if your child was hurt and you had to make important decisions for both of your lives? We had to use this services for many years. I had to use this service for many years, but I don't have any services available. I'm not sure how I would have been able to survive with the economy being bad and gas prices going high. How are we to expect to live comfortably, comfortably while the pay that we're receiving is so low? We're the only county that receives less in this county than other counties that are involved with IHSS Providers. I, how, how I, excuse me, how are we able to provide our clients with the proper care and the proper, the proper care they deserve? You know, in order for us to be able to provide our clients with proper care, we have to make sure that we are taken care of as well and be able to provide that care to our clients. Because I took this position because I care for people and I like to help. Now that, the, now as us being providers and our clients and our loved ones, with all of us being as flexible to be productive and provide the quality and needs of our clients, we are asking for a better pay to be able to, to ensure, to be able to live. It is time for IHSS Providers receive a better contract than mere fees being offered in pay. Thank you for your, thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Next up is Todd Goss, if I'm pronouncing that right.
Hello. Good morning. I'm going to be speak, my name is Todd Goss. Thank you for all the fellow providers here today. I'm actually sending a message to the board from a fellow provider who was unable to be here today unfortunately, so I'm going to give this message on his behalf. He is, his name is Devon Bressino out of District Three here in Stanislaw County. So Devon has been a Provider here in Stanislaw County for three years. Devon has been taking care of his son Maxwell, who has developmental delays and he is three years old. Soon Devon will also be taking care of his grandmother to help with daily activities because of ailing age. She's no longer to live a sustained life on her own without critical aid. She can no longer complete her own tasks day to day. He's also taking care of a family friend in the community who has no family to care for them, based on their quality of life and the needs they have. They suffer from physical disabilities spanning the three recipients that he is helping. And he's been on this program for the last eight months, helping these individuals, not just his family, but those in the community. Without IHSS, his recipients would suffer not affording the long-term care due to rising health costs within our state and country, not just our county. Because of IHSS, he can continue to improve their quality of life and give them the dignity and respect that they deserve. One example being, his recipient called him roughly about midnight, gasping for air, unable to breathe in panic because he was not able to use his arms to function his inhaler, was able to voice call and get Devon over there. Now, we ask you, think about yourself, how, what would have happened if this program wasn't here? If that individual he was helping did not have a provider, did not have anybody, more than likely could have passed away. These are reality, this is a reality, the situation that a lot of providers, not just Devon and those sitting before you today, encumber every day. So we ask yourself again, what would have happened? Providers like Devon behind, and those behind us and those throughout this county are well, must sacrifice their own well-being in service of others, just like many of us in this room are doing. We sacrifice our day-to-day lives in service of others, right? It's a, it's a dignified job. It's a very important, it's a critical part to our infrastructure and not alone, not just this county alone. Without IHSS, his recipients would suffer from not affording long-term care because IHSS can continue now to improve the quality of one's life. One example, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Every person will need some kind of aid here in, in this state, whether we're going to become a Provider or become a recipient. Everybody's going to need this program at some point. With more wages, they can increase the quality of care they provide, increase the quality of our community, and increase the quality of life for all IHSS recipients and their providers. There isn't enough for the younger generation to want to take care of the aging community. Look, as we all know, at this rate, roughly 25% of Californians are going to be over the age of 65 this time next year. 1% of our youth want to be providers. There is a huge gap in care. What are we going to do as a community to fill that gap? What are we going to do to entice providers to want to continue to be in this program, to want to continue to aid not just their family members, but their fellow community? We do not need crazy wages. We don't need crazy figures. We need to be comfortable, treated with dignity and respect as all providers should. If we have to fight, we will continue. If we have to band together, we will not stop. There is no job that pays too high making us take care of communities or loved ones. It is time for IHSS Providers to receive a fair contract, receive pay that is equitable to what they do on a day-to-day basis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Ryan Hoggett. I'm sorry, yeah, I'm probably pronouncing that wrong.
Thank you for your time. My name is Ryan Hoggett. I am a IHSS care provider for my nine-year-old autistic nonverbal son. He needs constant 24-hour supervision. I became a Provider last year because his mom moved to Kansas. I had just opened up my own business at the beginning of January and I had to shut it down, excuse me, because I had to provide care and I couldn't afford the childcare. It was over $3,000 a month. I was paying over $25 an hour. So, sorry. He now has all, because of IHSS, he now has all the specialty services he needs. He has behavioral therapy, occupational therapy, a psychiatrist, and extracurricular activities through the Society of Disabilities, baseball, bowling, just to name a few. With IHSS, I'm able to provide a high level of care for my son, which deserves. Without IHSS, I'd have to go back to my 12-hour-a-day job that I did previously to open the business and pay for that, that care provider to come in at 25 bucks an hour, which is so much money. So I just want to thank you for your time and I think we do deserve a raise in cost because the cost of living is very expensive. I'm really good with my money, but I have to coupon and do everything to, to be on budget to save that money and to make sure that I'm, I'm able to. And I don't have a penny left, just to be honest, but I'm able to make it, you know? And it's me by myself. I have no family here, so just me and him. So thank you for your time.
Sorry about knocking those papers out of your hand earlier.
Good morning, Board members, members of the community. Good to see you again. Unfortunate terms, but always good to see you. For those who don't know, my name is Astrid Sunaga. I am the proud caregiver of an adult son named Manny, who has autism, intellectual disabilities, and epilepsy. I am also the president of UDW ASME Local 3930, where we represent over 170,000 home care workers across the state. Here in Stanislaw County, where I eat, sleep, and breathe, pay taxes, work hard, we represent a little over 6,000 home care providers, some of whom, you can see, are sitting here with us today. You got to hear some of the stories, but let's put some figures out here so that when you go into closed session, you are thinking about working with us, not against us, closer to a solution rather than being part of the care crisis that is happening nationally and here in home. According to the most recent data measuring the income needed to attain a modest yet adequate standard of living in Stanislaw County, a single adult without children is $4,242 per month, or about $50,900 a year. This is a bare bones budget. There is no allowances for savings, emergencies, retirement, vacations. Our providers aren't running off to the Bahamas. They're spending their dollars here in this community, which brings dollars back into the budget here in the county. And this is data from the Economic Policy Institute on Family Budget. This income corresponds to an hourly wage of about $24.47 for someone who works 40 hours per week, or about 2,080 hours per year. Currently, the wage is here for Stanislaw County IHSS workers is $1,775 per hour. It's a pretty big gap there. That's less than three-quarters of this basic family budget wage. Regardless of how many hours of caregiving we actually provide each week, which is way more than 40 hours, I can tell you that. I've been up since 2 o'clock this morning with my son. Those 40 hours aren't guaranteed because some of our clients don't even get that. This means our actual earnings fall even further short of what it takes to live a modest life here in Stanislaw County. As you go into closed session today, I ask that you remember, we must give our caregivers the respect and dignity they deserve with wages measured in dollars and not cents and make this one equitable living wage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Astrid.
Good morning, Board, staff, and all other attendees. Milt Treeweiler. I was born in Stanislaw County and I lived here all my life. I'm worried, I'm concerned about the future. We only have so many natural resources and once we use them up, they're gone. At the February 4th meeting, a road project was approved for the proposed Del Porto Canyon Reservoir. The cost of this reservoir project is around $1.2 billion and will, it will only supply 60,000 acre feet of water. I want to explain that. It has an 80,000 acre feet water capacity, but you have a dead space at the bottom of the reservoir, so you only get 60,000 acre feet of water out it per year. There will be a time when this reservoir will get no new water during a year's period of time when we're in a drought, serious, serious drought condition. We'll just have that 20,000 feet in the dead space. If you go just a short distance to the south, we have the San Luis Reservoir and Dam Rise Expansion Project. This San Luis Reservoir Project will create an additional 130,000 acre feet of storage. Now, this is true storage because the dead space is below the top of the dam. It's going to be filling up the top of the area. It's going to be true storage, 130,000 acre feet. The cost of the project for the San Luis Dam Rise is $1 billion, less than the cost of the Del Porto Canyon Project. I checked yesterday online, and you can do this, you can go online and you can check the capacity of the dams. The available space in San Luis Reservoir as of yesterday was 386,000 acre feet. In other words, you can put that much more water in it right now. If you take that 386,000 feet of storage and add what they want to add, the 130,000 storage, acre feet storage, you come up with a total storage of 516,000 acre feet. Right now, $1 billion would take care of this. Del Porto could take their 1.2 billion or whatever they have so far, buy into the San Luis Dam Project. The water's still going to be distributed in the same manner and they could save Del Porto Canyon. They could also get more water than they will ever get out of Del Porto Canyon. It's a win-win for them to close down, or for you, or however you're participating in this, forget about the Del Porto, save your money, move down to San Luis because it's not even going to be filled every year. It will never be filled probably this year. It's not going to be filled. We have our water years. We can store the water, but we can't do it forever. So yeah, let's scrap the San, the Del Porto Canyon Project. Oh, one last thought. If you take a look at what we've spent on high-speed rail, it's going to blow your mind. We've already spent $15.7 billion on high-speed rail and it's a total waste of money. That project will never be completed. It's never going to provide services for anyone. Scrap that, whatever say you have over that, and let's use the money to take care of our county and to take care of the water issues that we do have in our county. We must all work together to prevent this farmland we have in our cities around Stanislaw County, we need to protect it. We are not a bedroom community for the Bay Area. We are the breadbasket for our country. We must be good stewards and conservationists for our children and descendants since they cannot do this for themselves. Save our farmland. It's worth the fight. Thank you.
Thank you, Milt. Next up, Brian Evell.
I just wanted to say that the number is much higher than $15 billion so far. It must be rough.
I'm Brian Evett, 3024 Dakota. Been here for all my life. And I wanted to say something for the IHSS people. You know, I went ahead and I tried to turn around. They're all leaving now. But I actually came in here, since they're leaving, I can't talk with them, so. I came in here on excessive force training, where we've been working on that because of the black community, they say. It's not only the black community that needs it. I'm a victim to excessive force. I was beaten in front of my house. There's no such thing as castle law in California, even though there should be and we should be protected, that if a vagrant comes in there, the cops shouldn't come and beat us up and then break into the house and let the vagrant live there. That was my incident that I had. And I was hospitalized, broken ribs, broken neck, blown out ear, hyperextended leg, had two hernias, all over, seven officers that beat me in handcuffs, in handcuffs, in front of my kids. You know, that's why we need this excessive training. Excessive force shouldn't even be it. It should be a polite situation when officers come in, they're all coming to your property, they're supposed to be there to protect you and your property. So let's get this training going. So let's get this training going, not only in the Modesto city limits, but here in the county. This is what did me on my property, in front of my kids. They had to grow up that way, you know? And now, I'm disabled, and I could be in the same situation as those IHSS. I came in here one day, and then I knew a lady that took care of the kids on Paradise Guest Home. She got old. I came back to this town to help her get on in-home care services. When I did that, they turned around. Doctors said she needed 24-hour care. I went into the hearing. They wanted to give her one hour. Evaluation is completely ridiculous, because who's going to drive to her house and come back for $16 an hour, what those people get paid, for one hour to help this lady? I went to three court hearings with the state. Even the state said, "What is the problem here?" So we need to take a look into who's making these hours for these older people that need care. That's what needs to be looked at. Because in the same way that I'm a victim to the sheriff's office being broke up, I could have been damaged for other. My kids could have had to take care of me. But I fought through it. But there's a lot of people that can't fight through it. They can't stand up for themselves. And they can't keep going to state hearings to try to get, "Oh, we'll give you two hours now. Then we'll give you three hours," you know, until you go work it up. Hopefully, you're waiting for the person to just die, just die, so we don't have to give you any hours. This needs to be changed here. And it needs to be changed in the sheriff's department. It needs to be changed in the police department. And we can't keep giving six figures to officers in Modesto PD. I mean, that's a completely ridiculous situation there, because then they are so narcissistic because of the earnings they are making. They don't care about the public. And the same thing. Why are we turning around and protecting the people that break the law? That's what they do. They sit there and say, "Oh, you can go, because we're sanctuary state. Oh, we're just going to follow the sanctuary rules." As your own sheriff has told you, we're a sanctuary state. We're not going to turn around and turn them over to the federal government. We're not going to let them run crazy. I had a break-in the other day, and I know it was little gangsters. They put a sign on there, 13, scratched it on the window. But you think anybody's going to do anything? And if I try to arrest them, what's going to happen? They're going to say, "He tried to kill me." And then I'm back in jail. They put me back in a contaminated cell, so I can be sick and scarred up for the rest of my life. Now, I don't know about any of you, but if you have scabies, it affects you. When you get older, it affects you, affects your liver, your heart. You don't have as long to live, just because you've been infected. And it's hard to get rid of it. I've had it for a year and eight months, trying to get rid of it. And I get it in the jail. Why did I get it in jail? Because the burglar says, "When I wanted to arrest him," and I even told the cop, "I want to arrest him." They wouldn't put him under arrest. But yet, they go out the next day, and they say to the burglar, "What's wrong, burglar? You didn't get it?" "Oh, he tried to kill me. He said he threatened to kill me." Threatened. I threatened to arrest the man. But that burglar can say this, and then I get thrown in. And they don't do anything. You can't do anything. I can't even get a conversation with that man, the sheriff. And now, I've had two guns stolen, which they have, which I won't get returned. They're just antiques, memorabilia. But I'm not going to get it returned. The sheriff's not going to even, he doesn't even want to talk to me. He's made two appointments, and he counsels both of them. What's this all about? Is this the way we run this place? That's all I got to say, I guess. But we need changes here. Never changes.
That's the last card I have for public comment. Any other public comment on items not on the agenda?
Yes, thank you. Good morning to everybody out here, council.
For the record, could you just state your name?
Yes, Malanali. I'm with Saving Del Porto Canyon, Men's Healing Circle, human being, and resident out here in Stanislaus County. I'd like to start off with the land acknowledgement. We're here on Northern Yoka Territory, right? And we need to acknowledge that. We also need to acknowledge that there's a benefit with saving the Del Porto Canyon. It's our gem of the West. It's our Yosemite. It's a beautiful place, great ecosystem. People come from out of state. You know, they come from different, the Bay Area, you know, transplants, people from Los Angeles. They complain, "No, there's nothing to do out here in Modesto," when this is one of the last affordable places in the state. You know, Stanislaus County, San Joaquin County is one of the last affordable places. It's what you make of it, right? And for a lot of us that grew up in really impoverished neighborhoods, as a farm worker, my family came here to help build the ag giant from Texas and from Mexico. We were out here as united farm workers, and we were able to elevate ourselves into business owners, homeowners, veterans, and into academia. You know, just like other families that came from Puerto Rico, from Hawaii, from New Mexico and Arizona. We never get called out for contributions to this economy. We get called out for aggression, or scapegoated as subversive people. We are the problem, but we're not. I think that saving Del Porto Canyon, as a person who didn't grow up around parks, didn't grow up in a community or cultural center, it was my escape. I could go out there where animals act better than humans, and humans act worse than animals. Growing up here in Stanislaus County was difficult. It was a very difficult time in the '80s and the '90s. There wasn't much to do out here. You had to make your own way. And if you weren't connected, and if you were in poverty, well, you just had to figure it out. And the saying was back then, "Pick yourself up by your bootstraps," which is, you know, that's horse feathers. You need opportunities, resources, and network to pick yourself up. And I think that with saving Del Porto Canyon, it'd be imperative for the next seven generations to save that, right? Instead of building the dam on a political quest, or to be in, you know, good graces with the farm owners, the landowners. That land is for everybody to enjoy. The next seven generations should enjoy that. It's a beautiful place. And for anybody that hasn't gone out there, I would challenge them to go out there. I would challenge them to go out there to the Del Porto Canyon and enjoy it. And enjoy the benefits of the endangered animals that are out there, one-of-a-kind animals and ecosystem, you know, microclimate, plants and animals that are out there. They would get impacted, and they don't have a voice. You know, whether it's the California mule deer, the wild boar, or the California condor that's making a comeback back there, the kit fox, the coyote, you know, the California owl, the salamander, the Long Lake green frog. We need that place to be intact for the next seven generations. And also, Stanislaus County needs to put more cultural centers, more community center, more parks for people, elders, women, children, and different cultures to come together and unite, and have conversations as human beings, right? Whether you're coming from a war-torn country as a refugee, or you've been here, we all matter. We're all human. And we can all find the language of love and compassion within each other to find common ground, instead of finger-pointing each other, instead of blaming each other, instead of playing the oppression Olympics of who has it worse. And that's something that needs to be done in a very unique manner, because time is ticking, and our youth are being deviated into bad and degenerate behavior, because there's nothing for them to do out here, especially in the smaller suburbs like Turlock and Patterson and Series. And I could go on and on. That's why it's imperative that we put something for our youth, more resources, more network, more infrastructure. I get it, you know, having a police force of the sheriffs and the PD, and giving them great salaries and stuff, and having them roam around like the Roman Legion, and keeping people where they don't belong. You know, if you're brown, you don't belong to a certain place. You just send the sheriffs there to do the pecking order and to put the smackdown. That's a very ancient way of thinking. We've got to look more into compassion and love, and put more resources and network. And maybe we could find some humanistic solutions, instead of finger-pointing each other and blaming crime on black and brown people, right? Crime is a universal thing. Everybody has good and bad people in all group segments. You know, even our European-Americans, they have bikers, a white supremacist, but they never get called out. So all I got to say is, love is the answer, and let's save Del Porto Canyon. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Any other public comment? Come on. If you could, just for the record, state your name.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Sevi Alexander Toscano. I'm 23 years old, and I'm a citizen from Patterson, California. First and foremost, I'd just like to take this moment to thank you, Chairman, and to thank everybody in this room for just allowing me to have a moment to speak. I've actually been looking forward to this moment for a very long time, because I want to ask each and every single person in this room one question. Does anybody know the reason why our beautiful county is named Stanislaus County? So the name Stanislaus actually comes from a Yoka chief named Estenislav. Now, for thousands of years, this land has been inhabited by beautiful people of all different tribes, but it was the Yokas who were here for thousands of years. Now, mind you, I've lived here in Stanislaus County since I was five years old. I was one of those people who came from the Bay Area, and my family moved to Patterson. So I went to school through the Stanislaus School District, all throughout elementary, middle school, and high school. I never learned anything about the history of our county and where we get our name from, until I became an adult. And I learned of this history because of going to Del Porto Canyon. And I went to Del Porto Canyon just off of being a kid who just wants to, who wanted just to get away from the public city noise and everything, and just connect with nature a little bit. And I'll tell you what. I'm speaking on behalf of not only myself, but a lot of people my age and who live in Patterson. But that canyon is not only a sacred canyon to the people who were living there for thousands of years, but to us as well, because when we go there, we're able to connect with nature, and we're able to actually have a moment of true serenity, and we're actually able to have a moment to be able to come back to Patterson refreshed, and to feel rekindled, and to feel at peace. We literally take a bit of peace with us when we leave from the canyon. And there's something very special about that place that goes beyond what I could even explain. I personally have hundreds of photos, and you can go there yourself, and you could see there's undeniable evidence everywhere that this is indeed, undeniably ancient land. This whole county is ancient land. And upon ourselves as a community, and upon your children and their children, I ask that you give them the opportunity to be able to experience the true beauty of California. If we build this dam in the Del Porto Canyon, you're not only robbing your children of a beautiful place they can go to connect with nature, and to truly feel God, and to truly feel peace and love unlike anywhere else you could go. You could go to Yosemite. And we've seen recently how Trump has defunded the wildlife services, places like Del Porto Canyon. You don't need anybody there. It's already good. You could just go there. You could park on the side of the road. I challenge the school district even to maybe consider having field trips of going out there. I myself, I'm not an expert archaeologist or anything, but I've gone out there, and I have discovered ancient seashells, sea snail shells, known as Plenobus shells, that date back thousands of years when there used to be an ancient ocean thousands and thousands of years ago in the middle of California. And I've found other many incredible archaeological discoveries that have actually given me an interest in archaeology and California history. It's because of Del Porto Canyon that I've learned about California, that I've learned about our land. Because I grew up out here not even appreciating and understanding what it means to live in Patterson. I used to think, "Oh, there's nothing to do. This is a small town. Like, this place is boring." Well, I started going to Del Porto Canyon. Not only did I begin to understand and become curious about our land's history, but it gave me a deep sense of appreciation. I'm so proud to be from Stanislaus County. And I've been around the world. I'll tell you what. I've seen the Colosseum in Rome. I've seen Mexico. I've seen many places in the world, and not a single place in the entire world will ever compare to the Del Porto Canyon. That is the most beautiful place I've ever seen in my entire life. I'll tell you what. Before, if this dam gets built, that's fine, but please, I ask you from the bottom of my heart, if this is the last time I ever get to see each and every single one of you, I just ask that you go there at least one time, and just take a moment to just hear the wind, and as the Bible says, "To be still, to hear the water, touch the water, feel the energy in the water." That land is sacred. It's beautiful. I love that place with all my heart. I just want to tell you guys that if you take that place away from us, it's not only, I know it's my time right now, but it's not, it'd be a complete devastation to the entire community, but it'd just be a disgrace to California history. It'd be a disgrace to your own children. It'd be a disgrace to this land, and it'd be a disgrace to Stanislaus County, which was named after Estenislav. It's not something that is ever acknowledged enough. He was a brave man. I thank you for a moment of your time. God bless everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Any other comments? Any other public comments? Items not on the agenda. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and move to consent calendar. Any board members like to pull any consent items? I have one request for public comment on C1. Milt. Treeweiler. You want? Yep.
Yes, Milt Treeweiler again. The reason I pulled C1 is because I wanted to talk about this particular piece of property. It's 19 acres. It's right there by De Nair. And actually, I did live in that part of the county at one time. And I remember that land for a long time. But the point I wanted to bring, point out here is, I could not find out what the density was. This is what I would consider Stanislaus County infill land. It's good land to develop. It's a perfect place to develop. But we need to get away from these estate-type developments. We need to go to affordable housing developments. So I'm hoping that this is a medium density. If this 19 acres is medium density, we could put up to 120, 130, 150 housing units there. And the cities have to do this. I hope the county also has to live by the fact that we need affordable housing in the county, and this is infill in the county. And this is the time to use it. This is the time to make sure that we have a lot of housing, and this is a perfect place to do it. It's right next to a trailer park. I have actually three friends who live in that trailer park, or mobile home park, which is just to the west of it. So it's a good place to put in some low-income housing, and that's the reason I pulled it. And I hope that you will require them to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Milt.
Mr. Chair, if I could pull C3, I'd just like to get an update from Mr. Lehman regarding the infrastructure improvements.
C3.
Good morning, Dave. I just pretty much want to make sure everything's still on track. I know the community of South Modesto is very excited for the developments, as are the other islands within Stanislaus County for their infrastructure improvements. Just want to make sure we're still hitting our target dates. I know we're anticipating construction starting in South Modesto in August. So if you could just please provide us an update.
It might be that for Park Lawn. Park Lawn could go out to bid as early as mid-March. Dave Lehman's Stanislaus County Public Works Director, by the way. And so we are a couple months ahead of where we thought we might be with Park Lawn. So that's good news for the Park Lawn neighborhood. Otherwise, they're all still right where we said they would be. Example heard in. We should be out to bid here shortly, and break ground in around the beginning of July. Did you want me to go through the whole ARPA list, or?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. My colleagues are okay with that. I mean, obviously, I'm more vested in my district, in District 5 with Bret Hart and Park Lawn, but sure, that'd be great, Dave.
Topeka Santa Fe is going to be one of the first ones out, because it wasn't very complicated. It should be out to bid in March, and we should be under construction right around mid-July. Colorado Rouse, we got good news there. The State Water Board has approved our funding agreement tentatively. We haven't signed the dots yet, but we did get that done. And that should be out to bid in the next few weeks, month, and it should be out there breaking ground in mid-July. Riverdale Park Tract, we're waiting on Water Board bid authorization for the city of Modesto, because they're doing a new water strengthening project in Riverdale Tract. And so we don't want to, don't want to... And so we don't want to, don't want to, to our project and then have the City of Modesto cut our roads up into Swiss cheese. We've got to wait for Modesto on that one. Kenwood Star, looks like we'll be out to bid in April and break ground in about mid-August. Bret Hart should be advertising middle of April to beginning of May and then break ground in mid-August. So Park Lawn's ahead of Bret Hart. Bret Hart also had some complications along the way.
Okay. Great. Well, I really appreciate the update. When would you anticipate us interfacing with Lafco and the cities and kind of beginning that annexation process potentially?
I think the last time we were talking about it was CEO Hayes. I think CEO's office is going to be taking the lead on that, so all deferred to CEO Hayes.
Okay. Well, thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right. Bring it back. Entertainer motion.
Motion to approve all consent items.
A first?
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Moving on to discussion items.
Milt, if you want to talk with someone from planning, I'll have them wait on that parcel if you'd like. Would you like to talk to him about the C1, IMC1? One second. Angela Freitas right there in the back corner. Angela?
All right. Discussion item, approval to adopt plans and specifications, award a construction agreement to Bay Cities Myers &amp; Sons Joint Venture, execute amendment number four to the agreement for professional services with Dewberry Engineers Incorporated, award an agreement for construction management services to NV5 Incorporated, authorize internal borrowing of $34 million from the 2002 and 2006 Tobacco Endowment Funds and related actions for the North County Corridor Phase One Clarabelle Road Extension Project, Public Works, David Lee.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Condit, Supervisor, CEO Hayes, Council of those, good morning. I'd like to take a brief moment. Quite a few of my team are here and we've done a lot of work in the last six years. And I want to recognize Tracy Madison. She was our business manager. She's back behind me. General Costley, who's our new business manager, has been working hard on this. Jennifer Aiken, my CA4, has been our part-time right-of-way agent. We don't have a right-of-way agent except for Jennifer, so good job, Jennifer. Also wanted to thank Theron. He's our project manager. He's right over there. And John Rawls is sitting behind me. He's our construction project manager. He built SR132. We're super excited to have him. Brad Reel from NV5 is here and the real Jackie Chan from Bay Cities Myers is here. So I want to thank Bay Cities Myers for being here. And so with that being said, let's, let's get it going. Discussion item 7.1, North County Corridor Phase One Project, Construction Support and Construction and Support Contractor Boards. And so here's the, the alignment. We've seen it many times. We start at Eastbound Oakdale and make that right-hand turn onto Oakdale Road and then left onto Main Line and then out to, up and over the BNSF and land on Claus Road. And I thought this would be clever. We've got this. Let's show it. All right. So we're leaning on the right there. We're looking south and class was this way. Class was west this way. And this is access for scorpion. This is our freeway section. It's a separate road. You change. It's just approach road. It's happening. I can over there in the UConn. I can over the BNSF tracks. You see a local Clarabelle Road is still there. Riverbank Army Munition Plant is there and we did accommodate around the fields. So you see access road. They're near the fields. And then they're sitting with class. This is all, this is going to scale and that's one of the reasons why we chose this is less doorway costs in the future. So the North County Corridor enhances safety. It develops a safe and efficient transportation route, creates a direct multi-modal route to the Riverbank Army Munition Plant or the former one. That's a big economic driver for the city of Riverbank. The benefit cost ratio is 2.43, meaning for every dollar we invest, we get $2.43 back in economic development and it's a reduction of 6.7 million vehicle miles traveled. This is a corridor we've been investing heavily in. We have spent $110 million on this corridor so far. SR99 and 219 Kieranin, we spent $45 million on that new interchange at 99. Two phases of 219 and we widened that to four lanes and they were 25 million each. And then the county did a widening project from McHenry to Oakdale and that was $15 million approximately. So $110, $110 million invested on this quarter. And here's a, here's all the parcels that we've acquired or this board is authorized acquiring. And so we went out for advertisement on December 19th. We're proposing that we award the project today. If we do, then construction starts in spring of '25, construction completion in the summer of '28. And the low bid was from Bay Cities Myers &amp; Sons Joint Venture for $144 million roughly, which was $28 million under the engineer's estimate of $173. Public Works did, for about the last five years, we've been chasing additional grants. And so these are all the grants that we've, we've chased and it adds up to $148 million. Spent probably about $200, $250,000 on grant application writing. It was a big effort and we were unsuccessful, even though we did get good feedback and we always went to the after-grant meetings to find out how we did. The project delivery costs, the contracts for $144 million, contingencies of 10% of that, construction engineering of about 10%, staff time in construction management, $1.5 million, and other supplemental items including BNSF permits, utility costs that we, we own add up to about $10 million, for a total of $184,857,741. And so here's how we propose to fund this. It's, we've secured $125,283,000 between Measure L Traffic Management, Measure L Regional Money, what else? Oh, the Section 190 money and the TSEP grant for $20 million. And so we've identified a potential $26 million of RMRA. We'll get to that. RMRA SB1, RMRA is usually normally restricted to maintenance. However, these funds may be used to fund grade separation projects as they are safety projects. RMRA is eligible up to $57 million of the cost and staff's recommending that we spend $26 million of RMRA. Some RMRA is already committed to bridge match, Seven Street Bridge for $3.1 million. Hills Ferry, Hills Ferry Road Bridge for $1.25 million, Quincy Road Bridge of $1.74, Keys Road Bridge for $1.25 million, and the Bridge Rented Maintenance Program and smaller bridges, $1.6 million. That does leave us some money to be able to do some heavy maintenance on some, some heavily traveled roads. The Tobacco Tax Loan. To fully fund the NCC project, Public Works requires a loan from the 2002 and 2006 Tobacco Endowment Funds in the amount of $34 million with a repayment period of 20 years and a variable interest rate using the current fiscal year's average rate of return of the county treasury earnings. The loan will be repaid annually from RTIF and we're asking for a five-year deferment and then repayment term of 20 years totaling 25 years. Of the $79 million of BFF, approximately $54 million will be used to repay the Tobacco Endowment Fund loan. The internal borrowing was presented to and supported by the Debt Advisory Committee on January 27th, 2025 for quarter supervisor's consideration. The bid protest, the second low bidder to Civil Gates, MCM filed the bid protest citing low bidder failed to list a subcontractor with a Class C-57 Wild Drilling Contractor's License in connection with certain groundwater work. There were three bid items that required the Class C-57 license, item 40, item 200, and item 265. Bay Cities Paving and Grading and Myers &amp; Sons Joint Venture, BCM listed Canapa &amp; Sons as a subcontractor for bid items 200 and 265. Canapa &amp; Sons has a valid C-57 license. Public Contract Code specifies that half a percent of the total bid price is a threshold where a subcontractor must be listed for bid item. There are several work items in the lump sum bid for item number 40 that do not require drilling and therefore do not require a C-57 license. This bid item is a 0.46% of the bid total and can be partially performed by Canapa &amp; Sons and/or BCM. County Council's assessment is that it's very reasonable that there is sufficient work available to be performed by others in bid item number 40 to keep Canapa &amp; Sons' total percentage of work below 0.5%. Therefore, the Public Contract Code section does not apply. So staff is going to recommend that you guys reject that bid protest. So staff recommends you approve the plans and specs for the project, award the construction agreement to Bay Cities Myers, authorize the Director of Public Works to execute that contract, authorize the Director of Public Works to execute contract construction change orders not to exceed 10%, bind the to Civil Gates construction, MCM joint venture bid protest as insufficient merit and reject the bid protest, approve the use of $79 million in RTIF for the North County Corridor Phase One, approve the use of $26 million of RMRA, approve the use of $10 million of Measure L Traffic, approve an internal borrow of $34 million from the 2002 and 2006 Tobacco Endowment Funds, authorize a commitment of fund balance in the general fund for capital acquisition equal to the annual tobacco debt repayment, principal interest for the repayment of the North County Corridor Tobacco Loan, approve number four to the Professional Design Agreement with Dewberry, authorize the Director of Public Works to execute amendment number four with Dewberry, approve an agreement for construction management with NV5 and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute a Professional Construction Management Services Agreement with NV5 in the amount of $14.7 million. Direct the auditor controller to increase appropriations and estimated revenue and authorize the Director of Public Works to take any appropriate action necessary to carry out the purpose and intent of these recommendations. And staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Dave, for the presentation. Thank you for the team for being here. Bring it back to the board for any questions.
So for the public, I know that traffic management, the $10 million you're putting in from traffic management is about six years' worth if we took 100%. RMRA, what is our average yearly?
Yeah, about $14 million a year.
$14 million. So that's about a year and a half, but some of that's committed out. And then there's the loan. All right. I'll have some comments, but I just wanted to make sure I understood how much RMRA.
Real quick, Mr. Maybe for, I can't remember the balance, current balance of the tobacco funds, the two different tobacco funds. These guys have that number?
I do too. How's that sound?
Yeah, I don't want to get it wrong. So I'm going to ask our staff who may have that information to come on up. I don't have to have to come up. They can just give us some there. Get it right. Okay.
Thank you for the question, Supervisor. Last look on June 30th, 2024, the balance was $65.5 million?
For both the 2002 and 2006, 65 total.
Yes. 65.5.
Okay.
Have we put that much money? I'm going to ask Julie, have we washed, you know, because that seems low.
Let me pull up a spreadsheet. This is a complicated topic, so I don't want to just answer off the top of my head, but for clarity, Supervisor Kieser, what, what question are you asking specifically?
Well, that seems low and sometimes we get paid back and it ends up in a different fund, but it was originally tobacco securitization. So I just want to clarify if that's the case.
Yeah, so we, we had a little update sheet in our mid-year briefing documents. I'm just going to pull it up to refresh my memory. Just a minute. Okay. Second question just, the five, five-year deferment, interest going to continue to accrue during that five years. Perfect. Thank you. That is correct. Take it down. No pressure.
The last one. I'll replace the music.
You want to go out to the public while we're waiting for judges? Oh, yeah. Please.
All right. Go ahead and open up to public comment on this agenda item. I have one card. That is Marlo Manqueros. Am I pronouncing that right? Manquero?
Manqueros is close. I'm Marlo Manqueros. Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. I'm Vice President of Bay Cities Paving and Grading and I'm here on behalf of the joint venture, Bay Cities and Myers &amp; Sons. We, of course, recommend that you accept the Public Works staff recommendation. The staff has already been very proactive in reaching out to the joint venture, trying to schedule and go through, and the staff is eager to go and so are we. So I'm going to make this, this is brief as I hope the project will be and, and we wish for the best. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Milt?
I just have a brief question. I totally, I mean, this is listed, when you list the amount, the main focus on it is this tobacco tax. So basically, my questions are, where did the tobacco money come from? What is the original intent of this tobacco money? How can we actually have it for so many years and not use it? Didn't it have some reason for being or some purpose for being? And so where did the tobacco money come from? What is the intent or what was the tobacco money supposed to be used for? It looks like you are going to replace it, but just kind of explain that. Thank you.
So while Patrice comes up with hopefully a couple of additional answers, I can't pull up, I can't get that mid-year document. My computer's not connecting very well. But to just answer a couple of basic questions that were just asked, the tobacco funds, we securitized annual earnings that we would receive based on tobacco litigation in 2002 and 2006. And the county has utilized those funds for a variety of purposes through the years. And we've done a lot of capital acquisition and improvements throughout the community. But we also established essentially an endowment fund where we pull interest off of those funds to support general fund activities here in the county. For many years, we've supported Health Services Agency, general fund support throughout tobacco endowment, interest earnings. In addition, we've used the fund as kind of revolving loan account for projects that we needed to do. So it served as a very important and valuable cash asset for us to be able to do internal borrowing within the county to essentially allow us to cash flow projects that otherwise would cost the county more to be able to produce. So that's been one of the primary functions of our tobacco endowment funds. This recommendation before you today is really an extension of that concept going forward. So hopefully I've answered some of those questions. There's a lot more information related to this that we could work on offline if anybody would like more information. But I think the question I heard from you Supervisor Kieser was, you're just interested in understanding how we've gone from some of our prior larger balances to where we're at today and whether or not we've essentially has been through these loans, which when they're paid back, they're not put in the actual endowment, they're actually put in the general fund fund balance in a way. So I'm going to look to Patrice to hopefully answer some of that.
Okay. Thank you, Jody, for that background and also thanks to my buddy.
and 2006. And the county has utilized those funds for a variety of purposes through the years. And we've done a lot of capital acquisition and improvements throughout the community. But we also established essentially an endowment fund where we pull interest off of those funds to support general fund activities here in the county. For many years, we've supported Health Services Agency, general fund support throughout tobacco endowment interest earnings. In addition, we've used the fund as kind of an revolving loan account for projects that we needed to do. So it served as a very important and valuable cash asset for us to be able to do internal borrowing within the county to essentially allow us to cash flow projects that otherwise would cost the county more to be able to produce. So that's been one of the primary functions of our tobacco endowment funds. This recommendation before you today is really an extension of that concept going forward. So hopefully I've answered some of those questions. There's a lot more information related to this that we could work on offline, if anybody would like more information. But I think the question I heard from you, Supervisor Keissa, was you're just interested in understanding how we've gone from some of our prior larger balances to where we're at today, and whether or not we've essentially has been through these loans, which when they're paid back, they're not put in the actual endowment, they're actually put in the general fund fund balance in a way. So I'm going to look to Patrice to hopefully answer some of that.
Okay, thank you, Jody, for that background. And also, thanks to my buddy who gave me her laptop, because I too cannot get into any of my files right now. So with the backdrop that Jody has provided, the original amounts that were established of the tobacco endowment funds were a combined $95 million. And then, over time, we have taken the opportunity to provide some loans internally for capital projects. And as those projects have been completed, so the funds are issued out to the various departments, and as those projects are completed, and the loan is repaid, it's been coming in to the County General Fund, where the auditor controller commits those funds for future capital use. We have up through, just within the last couple of years, dedicated the funds that had been brought back into the General Fund to the Crowes Landing Industrial Business Park. And currently, we are still receiving the benefit of repayment from the library. So there is a smallish amount, and I could look that up, in commitment in the current general fund balance as a result of that. Our current balance, as the auditor indicated, and I actually have to add it because I have it split here, in the 2002 is about $49.5 million, and in the 2006 Endowment Series is just under $17 million. So I have just around $66.5 million. Did you ask anything else about those funds?
So I think that there's about $30 million of the original $95 million. Some of that is still outstanding in loans to be repaid back, and some of it has been worked its way into the general fund, has been used for different projects. Is that right?
The projects have been all recovered, with the exception of the library fund, the library loan that is outstanding. And the other funds, once they come in and are committed, they've then been reissued out. We did make an investment in Crowes Landing Industrial Business Park, and that was not a loan at the time. So we're not anticipating those funds to be coming back in again.
So the library still is this?
Yes. And I could get that amount.
We can recap the rest.
Right, right. As well, what happens is, over time, as Jody mentioned, the interest does go into the general fund, and then there is fair market value adjustments on the funds over time as well. So the investments fluctuate.
Any other questions? Any other comments? I'll bring it back.
Okay, so this is, this is an interesting one. In general, this is the dog that chases the car and actually caught the car. We have Highway 132, which is in the middle of construction of the next phase, or not construction, of design, some right-of-way acquisition. Typically, in the county, with money coming in, it's very difficult to compete against two very large projects. And North County Corridor, there was, there was an assumption back with the previous Public Works Director, we put in for a grant from the federal government at the same time we were preparing for construction on 132. And the thought behind it was you, just what our Public Works Director, Lehman, had said, you fail at your first attempt typically, and then you go back, and they tell you how to improve the way you're putting your grants forward, what things they're looking for. Instead, I think because of a political moment in time, we were able to get grants on both 132 construction and North County Corridor. And when you have $20 million given to you on projects, you don't give money back to the federal government, because those are not just our tax dollars, but those are other taxpayers across the United States that are giving money to our project. So I said, we caught the car, so now we're in this conundrum of how to fund two very large infrastructure projects at the same time. And thus, when you see the financing mechanism, it's probably not, not as typical, putting so much money in. We do have Major L. There's a reason we have Major L, the traffic management component. Like I said, it's six years' worth of money, 100% of it, but we'll, we may be able to dish it out over time. So that will have an impact on potentially local projects. But again, you're weighing the $20 million of government, of federal money coming into this community. So I think it justifies, the RMRA also has some effect on bridges, just what you were talking about. And the loan is the most unique component of all of this. Because of the snapshot in time, there's a timeframe in which this money has to, or we have to be under construction. So we've been pushing this along, and because we weren't successful in reaping any more grants that we had put in for, we are going to loan ourselves money. Again, I would consider this a one-off. I wouldn't consider this the usual, and I wouldn't, all the other departments that are out chasing grants, I don't know that we have the ability, again, because of this will reduce the ability to borrow anymore. I'm going to be supportive of this again, because I was one of those guys when Matt was saying we're going to put in for it, and I was like, go for it, you know, because the chances of us getting it are very slim. And I always like to tell Dave, this is a positive comment. It always comes out sounding negative, but Dave's cleaning up a lot of Matt's vision, because we didn't think we were going to get it, which is great. And I have so much respect for Matt, trying to do it. But it came probably a little faster than we anticipated. But we're going to make it work. We're going to build the best project we can. And I'm excited for it.
Just to follow up on that a little bit, you know, we talked about how important these two projects are, or we really talk about these projects, but just how important that they are. And it's the fact that they both have a 132 in North County Corridor. I see John out there. We were in the trenches a few years back on 132, and look what we got. We did great work. And John, thank you for all your work on that. And so, but I just want to emphasize, you know, the east-west passages here in our county, how important this is. And these are things that have sat, 132 sat for 60 years, you know, we're going on 70 years, that it sat there and did nothing. And we got that going. And then the North County Corridor, same thing, years ago, been working on this thing, and to see all these things come together. Critical to our county, critical, like I said, to the east-west passages in this county, critical to our ag industry, to get goods and services in and out of this county, as we want our ag industry to continue to grow, and not want to leave here, because we don't have the proper infrastructure to service that industry. So, you know, we talk about the money and all those things, and the grants, and how we're going to make this work. But the reason we're trying so hard, the reason we're using our tobacco funds is just because how critical and how long we've, you know, this project, 132 projects, the financing for this 132 doesn't have anything to do tobacco funds, but we're getting creative to make these things work. And that's what we need to do, because it's been, it's been very long that it's sat there, both these projects. And to have this opportunity to keep these things going now, and to keep North County Corridor going, it's critical. Vito said, I don't know, we normally would hit the tobacco funds for this, but it is a good, it's good to be able to borrow from ourselves. We do that all the time. I encourage my clients to do that all the time, if you can. Keep the banking industry out of there if you can. And it's cheaper. Now, that's bad for my banking connections, but anyway, I very much support this, and I appreciate the creativity to get to this. So thank you, guys.
I'd have to agree with both of my colleagues. It is a creative funding plan. It's getting the job done. It's exciting. Here in Stanislaus County, we have two great projects going on. It's going to be a time for people to get to work. We'll be providing a lot of jobs. It's a great time. But it's projects that have been talked about for decades. 132, North County Corridor, which was called the Oakdale Bypass at one time, and for decades, it has been talked about. And there's actually action now being done here in Stanislaus County to make that come to life. The North County Corridor is the safety aspect. As my past life as a firefighter responding into those areas, I still have incidents. I think about that railroad track at that intersection of Terminal and Clarabelle, calls that still stick with me today. So it's, it's a great time to be able to say, we're going to make that place safer. And so it's, I'm also, it's supportive of this agenda item. All right?
Motion to approve.
I have a first.
Staff recommendations.
I have a second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Staff, thanks you very much. And we'll schedule a groundbreaking in April, May. Thank you very much.
We look forward to coming in under budget and not utilizing tobacco securitization funds.
All right. Correspondence. We do have correspondence. Get to that page. Acknowledge receipt of correspondence and refer as recommended on the agenda. Board of Supervisor reports. Any reports? It looks like we're good. Legislative Fiscal Management Report.
Just a real quick report. Last Friday was the deadline for to introduce new state bills. So we're back in a new cycle of looking to see what's out there, and lobbyists are already doing a good job for us, helping us understand any of the bills that have been introduced that impact us here in Stanislaus County. So we will let you know as we, as that analysis matures. And then obviously, I think it just, it almost goes a lot the same, but we do have to acknowledge that a lot of the activity at the federal level continues to have potential for significant implications in some of the county-provided services that we provide. There's nothing specific that we can point to here today, but you could see there's a lot of rapid movement in DC. So I always just need to acknowledge that there is a county connection there. Ultimately, right now, we're not sure what that looks like, but we're definitely on the alert and trying to monitor those things. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn, and then ask County Council report on closed session items.
Yes, we have several items to discuss in closed session this morning. The first is a conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 subdivision D 2 or 3, we have one matter to discuss. The facts and circumstances to be discussed are contained in a letter dated November 8, 2024, from the Sheriff to the Board of Supervisors, requesting the Board appoint conflict counsel regarding the sheriff's disagreement with the consolidated emergency dispatch agencies' selection of dispatch software. The sheriff's letter is available from the clerk and the board, if you wish to look at that. The second item is a conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency negotiators are Jody Hayes, Ryan Leib, and Jonah Navarro. The labor organization organizations is the Stanislaus Storm Deputies Association, AFSCME Local 10, and the Stanislaus County Employees Association. The Board will then sit as the in-home supportive services public authority, and the closed session there is a conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency negotiators are Jody Hayes, Ryan Leib, and Jonah Navarro. The labor organization is the in-home supportive services UDWA. Is that appropriate for public comment on the closed session items?
Any public comment? Seeing none, means adjourned. Again.